This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it's three o'clock. Let's, uh, I'll call the meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the pledge of lemons.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We stand one nation under God, in this one.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to today's board meeting. If you are attending here in person, just make sure your phones are on bribery, please. If you're attending through the go-to meeting, please make sure that your line is on mute until you have an opportunity or chosen to speak. Before we start the meeting, I need a motion for Mr. Gant to attend via special privilege.
Alright, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment?
Thank you.
I have none. Nothing, no one signed up.
Okay.
Nothing via email, fax, or?
Not for this meeting, no.
Okay, what's the catch?
Well, let the record show, we are ahead of schedule. Okay, uh, we will move into staff reports. Uh, we will start with district council.
A few items in working with district staff, I remember by Chelsea and Laura, I update you on that show. Regards to lease office space and also on the contract for the two lots in Fairway Office Park submitted these own verification letters today.
Submitted this own verification letter today on the contract for the purchase of the two lots in the Fairway Lakes Office Park. And working with Chelsea Laura on that as well as the lease for the temporary utilization for office space because the trailer situation and Chelsea will handle that under her portion. Working with the bond finance team also on a number of items involving the upcoming hearings and the validation. So there's been a lot of calls and conversations with regards to that. And either at the August 4th or August 18th meeting, or maybe even September meeting if we have one, is, uh, it might need to have a special meeting in August. We desire advice concerning the pending litigation involving Ford Line. So we will coordinate with Chelsea and Laura, the date for that, date and time for that, either August 4th or August 18th.
So you'll try to blend it into a meeting?
Yes, as opposed to having a special meeting just for that. And so we will then handle the notice. So just wanted to let the board know that if the board could, basically, by consensus, agree to hold that session at the date and time that we advertise. Is that, if I can have a motion to that effect, that board conducting a attorney-client closed-door session, under Florida statutes, says we desire advice concerning the pending litigation involving Ford Line on August 4th or 18th at a time to be coordinated between staff.
I'll make that motion.
Good question.
Wait, let me get a second. And the motion?
I'll second.
Motion second.
Can we, can we move that? That fourth meeting is going to be a circus. It's gonna be a circus. Can we move it back to the 18th? We'll be here until nine o'clock at night?
I think when we get to that portion of the meeting, if we can talk about that then, as far as, you mean the 18th for the closed-door session?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine by me.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we will have it on the 18th then. A time certain on the 18th. We'll adjust the time because we have the budget hearing and assessment hearing that day also. Thank you, if we can have.
Okay, so the motion is to adjust that to the meeting on the 18th?
Yes, please.
So I have a motion and a second. I will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Bill, just want to check, can you hear Tony, okay?
Can you?
Bill, can you, can you hear, uh, Tony, okay?
Yeah, yes, I can hear.
Great, just wanted to make sure.
Once Chelsea turn my mic on, yes. And the other items, there are other items on the agenda that I participated in, but those are to be handled, I think, by other staff.
I have a zoning question pertaining to the comments part. Would you like me to hold that until we get to?
No, you can ask them.
Okay, so the comments part. I know we've talked about zoning.
Yes.
Can you, based on what you know, and we might have to engage Tetra Tech, timeframe for rezoning? If we were to look at administrative building in conjunction with, um, you know, uh, that being also multi-use for parks and recs administration as well? That's what we're, um, that's what we're considering. We would need to have a rezoning of that property?
I guess there's two steps to it. One is, we still have to find the right entity to sign the waiver disclaimer and release of the covenants as to the restriction on utilization for recreational facilities. And the second component would be to get a zoning verification letter on that. We can ask the county staff under the current map and zoning, what the allowable uses are, if we can use it for governmental administrative offices or any format, depending upon the answer from that. And I can put that together next week. Then we will then get with Chelsea and Stephen or whoever the appropriate consultant is and possibly a planner to have a, like a pre-application meeting with the county staff. And then they will tell you what hurdles, pickups, bumps, and valleys you'll have during that.
How are we gonna get past that 236 acre requirement? Send our documents that we have 236 acres of park.
But again, it could still be a park. But again, what are the lawful uses in that park area?
In other words, can we reduce the park is what we're saying, because we aren't gonna create land. Ain't no place to go.
I guess the question is, I would phrase it when I do the zoning verification letter, that we're not saying eliminate the park uses on there. That's still the, and we can craft and see what kind of response back we get. And we may want to add in the issue about the acreage.
Does the, do we count the linear park?
Yes.
And then also the dog park, because that was an addition. We didn't always have that.
If you don't count the linear park, you're never gonna get to 236.
But yours?
It's in there.
Well, and I'll have to go back and double-check. Remember, WCI requested a verification, zoning verification letter years ago, and the county staff said that's, I can't remember the exact language that was requested, but they said that's not a subject of the ZVL. Then I did a follow-up on, and they said, well, you've rephrased it. You have a couple more questions, but we're not able to answer those either. So I'll go back and look at those two. At the August 4th meeting, I can talk to the board about that. But I think having a zoning verification letter at least to understand what the county's position will be about. What are the range of uses? Is it gonna be parks and recreation? You may have a parks and recreation administration building.
Yeah, and that's, that's the way I would position it. It's a, the comments park is a, you know, a multi-use property of recreation.
So it's not to run into?
With administration.
Yes, so not to run into pitfall that Ed was talking about. I think, we'll look at it and counting it that way.
The reason why I'm bringing this up is because we're gonna be discussing an item that I think there is, some constraints or consideration around what we can, what we're able to do with that comments park area. Because there is sense of urgency, and we'll talk about that a little, a little later around our facilities plan as it pertains to the district administrative facilities and municipality. So ballpark on, I know this is probably a difficult question, but timeframe for us, if we have to go through those steps that you dictated, about what kind of timeframe we're looking at?
We really could, we could find that out when and if we had a pre-bid, pre-application meeting with the county, and we could get a better time, timeframe.
And you said historically, with your experiences, four months.
That's conservative.
And again, it all depends on nature and extent of what has to be hap, whether it can be administrator, whether it has to currently go through a hearing examiner, whether it has to go to the full county commission. All kinds of variables. And that's the pre-app meeting, we'll find out.
Uh, any additional questions for Tony?
Are we gonna have any discussion under your deal on the urgency road?
Um, we'll provide that update as part of the monthly reports.
Okay. I just want to check to see if there was any legal issues. Have we got that land now? Is that done with the V's?
No, we don't have that.
What do we have to do to get that?
Have to sit down with Charles and go over all the lots and lands that we need, because there are a number of other parcels too. So that, that's my plate to.
We got a meeting set.
Tony's gonna coordinate it for next week, and we're gonna try to allocate an hour with the V's to.
This and other properties?
Yes. There's, they, the problem is, is the V's doesn't want to just hand over one or two properties. They want to do the whole shebang at one time, which I don't blame them.
I just want to go lots and take care of everything.
But we, we have consistently been pushing them, and so Tony's gonna coordinate that meeting.
Once we get that approval from either the county, the city, or both, we're not gonna be able to do anything if we don't own that land.
Yeah.
Well, we've gotten the approval for the permitting and stuff, so.
Oh, we do now?
We, we had the V's sign the, or WCI.
No, I mean that to actually physically go anywhere with it. If we don't own that land, we aren't gonna do anything construction on it.
Correct. And that's, that's part of why we're gonna have that meeting with Charles, because some of the other parcels, I think Russell Smith came up with some, are some of the lakes and conservation areas and ponds where we own half, they own, I mean, we own.
Well, he's trying to get rid of those now?
Well, I think you can clean those up.
We're pushing forward.
Only got a 1986 date on it.
Well, no, I think those will be helpful because we have easements already. And it's actually better to have the fee simple ownership, because the whole trespass issue which we ran across.
And we got identified all the ponds, so that we don't have any screw-ups on that. I know at one time, there was like six or seven over in Gateway Greens. How many more do we have?
We'll double-check with them. We, the list, they gave us, I think, three or four at least, and we'll double-check with them when we go through that.
Okay, then the, the last one for Tony, and I don't know, because I'm catching from owners over here, the shock of the 96 apartment condo or apartment units going in in the little triangle. Apparently, if you go to LIPA.
The triangle?
Seven-Eleven.
The New Haven?
North Haven.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
They were not hitting like. Yeah, well, but there, there's a paper going around the community, and it's got a picture with an area drawn out. And it shows the property is 14 acres, not the five that was presented. Well, the reason is, is that it's got nine, nine acres of the lake, the pond, 132, what I, or 130. What I'm thinking is, is this is another issue very similar to, to old WCI Westinghouse. They've owned that land forever. While they own it, we maintain it, and it has the 20-foot lake management easement around it. But the question that's coming up is, is that when they do a density calculation on these properties per the, the requirements, are they dividing it by 14, which is inclusive of nine acres of water, or are they dividing it by five? Which means that that is a huge density acreage. If you've got 96 units on five acres.
We can inquire to Lee County as to how this calculation.
Well, I didn't know how far that had progressed.
What is it called, New Haven or North Haven?
North Haven.
Okay.
But the, the real issue is, I think the misunderstanding was, is that pond, I think it's just like WCI. They own several ponds. And the deed has never been transferred over to us.
Correct. And there might be a dedicated easement, which gives the district requisite interest to operate and maintain it.
Correct, correct, okay.
Tony has some documents he'll be reviewing regards to North Haven.
And I'll look at it from that perspective also.
It's a totally new, just pop-up.
Well, it used to be a condo, 76-unit condo about four or five years ago, and then the market didn't do anything. And now all of a sudden, they're hot to go with this 96-unit apartments. But people over there are getting caught cold turkey on this, didn't know this thing was coming, and they're asking questions. Is there any way to stop it? I said, not unless you want to spend a lot of legal money.
What lake is it? That's a lake or pond?
Tony, I'll get that information too.
The, the, the whole project, they don't want it. They've been looking at pristine wetland, forest, whatever you want to call it, and now it's gonna be houses looking right at it.
So Tony, can you do us a favor? Because now we're, there's quite a few items that I think are on your list. And maybe if you can work with Chelsea on putting it on a task list?
Yep.
And what next action is and, and time for that, that would be helpful, just so we can prioritize and make sure that you're, you're focused on it.
And then actually agenda fact.
Perfect, thank you very much, sir. Okay, district engineer, do we have Stephen on? Oh, actually, welcome.
Do you have a name badge?
I didn't see it.
Haven't seen him for long.
Is that with a V or PhD?
It's a V.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have a couple items for you, and Fred Middle, he is, I believe, on the call. He's waiting for his items to come up. So we have the task authorization update, and I've got the lake bank reprioritization list. So I'll go through our task update. A couple of these items are on here. For, most of them are from Fred, really, all the utility ones. So if you have any questions pointed at those, I'll let Fred answer them today.
Can we just, those, anything that has a due date previous to today, can we just, if you can just let us know if that has taken place? Like, again, the irrigation enforcement improvements, the meet with Gateway, that was a subject. Can you just let us know if that was completed, if that needs to be pushed out?
Yeah, I think Fred was on top of all those dates. I think all those actually happened.
Alright, so I mean, if I'm fine if Fred gives those updates, I'm just using that one as an example. Thank you.
Yep, so I'll jump down to the flowway weir adjustments. We resubmitted for the, the major flowway weir modifications, those three weirs. In June, we got a request for additional information. Last week, we submitted that response today. Talking with the reviewer, there shouldn't be any additional comments based on what we submitted. So that one, we should get a permit issued within the next two weeks. Pond 38, we got a.
Before we leave that, before we leave that.
Yep.
We'll get the permit in two weeks. I'm gonna say August 15th, ballpark number.
This doesn't include Pond 38. I'm about to talk about that.
Okay, I thought you were removing, I'll do another item. I'll be right, go ahead.
Okay, so Pond 38, we submitted, and on June 23rd, we got an RFI last week. This one only had three items, so that one is pretty short and sweet to respond to. We're working on getting all those responses taken care of. This week, we'll probably resubmit mid-next week. And then we should probably get the permit for that, assuming there's no more comments, which there shouldn't be, based on the comments they gave us. We should have a permit two weeks after mid-next week, so three weeks.
Bob, Jeff, some other questions first?
Okay, once we have the permit, what's the next step?
So the next step would be bidding. So we'll, we'll take our permitted plans and create a bid package, and that will get released for bids.
Timeline, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days?
Once we have our bid plans, procurement, I'll take 30, probably.
Minimum 30 days.
Minimum of 30 days, so.
And how long to create a bid package? We're looking for a total timeline of?
Total timeline, yeah. And I'm trying to piece it together, and I've got new information, so.
And if you don't have that today, I mean, if you can just.
But that's what we need. I want to be able to track it and see if we're on time.
Yeah, of course. It's, it's kind of moving target with the permitting agencies.
Yeah, and this is where I would love, this is where I would love to see a project plan for this. And all this permitting and pre-work is part of the plan. So we know, once we get the permitting, it's gonna be two weeks, two weeks, and then 30 days to go through bid prep. And then I would love to see that more structured, so we can kind of sequence all these projects.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think that's what you were looking for, Bob, yeah.
Aerator FPNL assistance. So we were asked to help locate potential power sources for eight new aeration systems on eight new lakes. We're working with FPNL right now to coordinate those efforts. So far, we've just, we've identified all the potential easements that we can use to bring power to the lake for the aerators. And now we're working with FPNL to determine where the closest transformer is on that.
Does this have any, um, I know we had talked about with the FPNL, the lighting plan, that there could be some potential benefits to aeration? It was, I think, Bob, you might have brought that up.
Yeah, well, when, when we put the aerators in Pelican, electrical access, electrical availability was the biggest hurdle and the most expensive thing we did with aeration. In other words, to get power to the pond was a major, major undertaking. It was close to $300,000 worth. So I want to make sure that power, power is available.
Right.
It's not just that you gotta buy.
And I think what, the point that you had made at one of the previous meetings is, if we are looking at, um, in our lighting plan, you know, and a different agreement with FPNL, could we leverage that for power with the aerator projects?
I will tell you, the timeline of this aeration project is much faster than the street lighting one, so.
Who are you working with?
The contact you gave me.
Eric.
What was his name?
Eric or Juan.
Juan, I think, maybe. He passed me off to a woman, I think. I don't remember her name.
It was Kathy or something.
Kathy, yeah. Kathy reviews all the construction submissions.
Different group than I think dealing with street lighting.
Yes, yeah.
Alright, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're, we're still thinking about that as opportunities, if, if those opportunities were available.
And one, one other side question, is Pond 1 included in this, in Pelican? Because we've had it aeration installed for over nine months, probably longer now, without, without electric.
I'll follow up on that again tomorrow. I actually wrote a note before you even asked about it. I'll check on that.
Okay, because that one's been hanging, and I wanted to dovetail it into the streetlight meeting, if we have to, and my, with FPNL.
I'll work with Stephen.
So there's, there's equipment already there, but there's no power?
Everything's there, everything's there, but the.
And what's been your holdup so far, just scheduling?
Just can't get FPNL to come out and put a meter in. It's all done.
The, everything has been applied for, and they were checking on it, and that was the last update that I got, so I.
The application's been over a year old.
We'll follow up on it. Yes, I have it.
Bob, that's totally it, just the meter.
That's all.
Just waiting for a meter.
Throw the switch, we run. Been a year. Unbelievable.
Alright, Stephen, back to you.
Um, streetlight review. So this is the task that we were authorized to do photometrics at the intersection of Pelican Preserve Boulevard and Cypress Grove Drive. So we prepared a report that pretty much said, hey, you guys have essentially no lighting here. We gave recommendations on what to do. At this time, I think the best path forward for everyone is to take our recommendations and for Gateway or P-PAC or whoever would handle that to initiate a contract with an electrical contractor to install the lights that we recommended.
I think P-PAC has already said to do that?
Can we not enter, do this?
Yeah.
Uh, Phil? So while we can't engage the.
Okay, okay. Alright, because I thought it was done. That's the only reason I engaged. I thought they were already done with it.
Are you going LED?
Yes.
I didn't know that, but okay. Okay.
Um, phase two, year two lake bank restoration, that's postponed till later in the dry season. Miscellaneous updates, we're still waiting for resolution on Arborwood Phase 3, that storm pipe that was installed out of the easement. I think Tony's been working back and forth on agreement. I think they had some questions on our hold harmless, right?
Yeah, on that, the, apparently WCI did not like to hold harmless. So they indicated that they are planning on removing the pipe completely, the wayward pipe, the one that was off the, and installing the correct pipe in the correct location. And then Stephen followed up and saying, when you do the record drawings and give us the bill of sale, and also you need to check everything in the area. I think that's how you phrased it, Stephen?
Yeah, so they provided certified record drawings, you know, indicating that everything was in the easement. A third party, the homeowner had this property surveyed, and the pipe wasn't, it's not where it's supposed to be. So it raises concerns about the rest of the, the pipes. So we just asked them to, you know, verify and provide updated record drawings to, you know, possibly indicate they're in the correct spot. So we're waiting for response from, yeah, through the rest of Arborwood. Not just that pipe, the rest of the pipes.
Okay, yeah.
Um, that's it on the task updates. If you want to shoot any questions.
What other one before you leave it? Cassella papers?
Cassella papers, yeah. So we got quotes from a contractor, I think it was around like $14,000 or $15,000. Uh, the next step would be for P-PAC or Gateway to just initiate a contract with that provider.
Here again, I'm thinking it's done.
Yeah.
I thought P-PAC already said they'd pay for it.
We, um, they might do, I don't know.
We can't engage the audience, guys. If there's a follow-up, we're, we'll have to follow it up.
Okay, Laura, did you get from P-PAC, did you get a request to do that, to pay for it?
I don't have everything I need for that yet, but they do have a meeting tomorrow, and I can talk to them about that.
Unfortunately, and I hear you, Doug, but one of the things that we keep going month to month to month on, the little things like that, where half of us think it's done. I know it went before P-PAC. I know they approved the money. I thought it went to staff. We were waiting on Stephen, and now I'm hearing Stephen's done. He's ready to go. But it hasn't happened.
Bob, we're working on setting up some procedures. That way, the communication can be clear between staff, P-PAC, and the board.
I have a checklist now for requests and POs.
And if we even take that a step higher, it's just everything that we're, that we have in, in progress, should have a plan and, and updates and.
Okay.
We implemented a form with a checklist for Stormy Brook and P-PAC to request stuff.
The frustration is, things fall through the cracks. That's what I'm trying to fix, okay?
Just to, for clarification there, just to beat the dead horse, but, so we were asked to, you know, find some quotes for the papers. We did that. We provided the information that we had to everyone. And, you know, that was probably over a month ago.
I had no problem with what you did.
That was a limit of our.
No, we understand, but appreciate the clarity.
You guys have any questions for any of these items, or for Fred on his utility items?
So just to clarify, I'm, I meet weekly with both Fred and Stephen to keep these moving. If there is an item that take, that would require a board direction or a decision, they know that they have to bring it forth. A prime example is, one of the next couple items are the modeling and just to, hey, this is where we're at. We're ready to get this to 100%, and then figure out what the next steps are. So they are constantly updating this, and we have constant communication.
Stephen, who's doing the electrical work on running from these transformers, FPL, to the point, final point on the aerators?
We're not that far.
Yeah.
They haven't got that far?
We're not that far.
Okay, uh, any questions for Fred or Stephen? Okay.
So I have one more item, and then I'll pass it off for Fred to give an update on the modeling report. So it would be the lake bank reprioritization. So we saw this list in a different form about two months ago, I want to say. It was, it was pretty much just a total linear foot and broken down by like what severity it was then. We were asked to break out the total linear foot into different categories, for instance, residential, road, commercial, or golf course. So we broke those down into their separate components and, you know, updated the list accordingly.
So next steps for this is, we have this, this prioritization list. If the board would like to review and tweak the list, or, you know, keep it as is, what does, the next steps for these critical lakes would be to go into either a facilities plan or jump right into design. But pending, we'd have to look at the funding source.
Well, we gotta do the facility plan before the design.
If we pursue SRF, we, we are required to do a facilities plan.
To me, there would be no reason why not to lump up two years minimum, possibly even three years, to put them all in the facility plan. That, that's the no-brainer, but it'll hold you up later. Get the facility plan approval, get it out of the way, such that then we can do the design and/or construction in phases.
Right.
So next steps would be, depending on what the board chooses, is if you want to do phase one, phase two, all of the phases, Tetra Tech can come back at a next, following meeting with a task authorization for a price to do the facilities plan.
These are annual, correct. Basically, annual, phase one's next year, phase two's next year.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend that we have a proposal to come back to do facility planning for phase one, two, and three.
And this is just semantics, but can we rename these? Because we already completed phase one. So we can just sequence these.
Then phase one and part of phase two.
Yeah, part of phase two, just, just so we.
Yeah, we can change the numbers.
We're not confusing things.
Three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would combine, I would combine three years at least on facility planning.
So there's two pages here, Ed. I don't know. Just wanted to make sure you're not missing the full scope of this. So there's, um, because you mentioned up to phase three.
Yeah, that takes you all, basically, all the way through, as I looked at it, through the reds, which are the criticals.
I mean, most of the ones in phase four and five have reds on the golf course side. Um, we, we put the ones with residential towards the top of the list.
Yeah, yeah.
So we just need clear direction from the board.
Well, that's my recommendation, that we do facility planning on basically all the reds.
Can we, phase one, two, three?
As shown here, yeah.
So the, the direction is facilities plan for phase one, two, and three, and we hold on anything for now. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that would give you, that gives you three years of designing construction. We're not gonna do them any quicker than that, because we've already said we've got a time limitation that these contractors can only handle five or six.
Yes.
So those are lumped, and those are lumped in per phase, is what we think we would be able to tackle construction-wise per year.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
There's one on phase five that's at the bottom.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
I'm gonna sneak that one up into phase three.
The, the 120?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's a lot of residential area for.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
So if there's a clear consensus, Tetra Tech will come back with a task authorization and, at the next meeting, for the facilities plan.
Agreed.
A staged plan, right? How much is?
So the facilities plan will cover all of these lakes.
But in different, in different stages, okay.
We would take that facilities plan, and then we would design construction plans for, you know, phase one, or whatever we're gonna call it. You know, we can ramp it up however we want to, after the facilities plan is developed.
The facility, facility plan will delineate the, uh, the following things that'll go to construction and/or designing construction.
Okay, and that will.
Doesn't even have to, really. I mean, we don't have to, like, pigeonhole us to a scheduling of facilities.
We want to.
Don't tie your hands.
And it's also gonna differentiate between the type of repair we would make.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
For residential versus golf.
Golf course, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping to see.
And did we say in the past, because we have excluded anything outside of just the lake bank? I know we talked about aerators and, and some things in the past. Was that excluded from?
Well, I think it's a question of how we want to fund, fund that aeration, but I would not, I would not mix these two together.
Herefore, we haven't mixed them.
I would not mix them.
Okay.
They're in the same project.
Okay.
You're gonna go, if you're gonna go SRF, I'd go two facility plans, because you've got the bath metrics, you gotta work into that, plus, yeah, I.
That's fine. I just thought I would bring it up just to make sure I was on the, on the same page with that.
It would take our glacial pace to zero. Yeah, that makes them all up. We go from no movement to minus movement.
Bobby, did you have something?
Uh, so Pond 78, Dennis Preserve, that's all residential, so that it's on technically phase three, right?
Okay, I see it.
But we already went to one, so two, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, alright.
So that one, because it's all residential, and it's probably the biggest one, I, why, and if it's all critical. And if it's all critical, why wouldn't it be the next phase instead of?
I don't have a problem with moving up to phase one.
I mean, just because it's all residential and it's the biggest.
Does the board want to move prioritize that one up to?
I don't have a problem.
That that logic sounds good to me.
I don't have a problem.
I mean, it's all residential. Residence first, roads after.
Were the phases right now just based on contractor capability, the numbers?
Yeah, the phases are based on linear foot, what we've been able to accomplish in the past. And we broke it up into chunks that are manageable.
If we push seventy-eight up to something that's currently up there, come down?
We probably have to swap something. I mean, it's, you know, it's about a mile.
Because you're already there for lake seventy-five, so you're going to be there on Dennis Preserve on phase one. You're all residential. So I I just can't see the both residential, you're already going to be there.
Yeah.
So it would make sense mobilization, you're already there. That's my thought.
So just to keep in mind, this is kind of like a high level prioritization. These are based on field observations.
I agree.
This isn't based on like hard survey data. This is our observations, L's observations, the lake maintenance, uh their observations.
And are you saying so basically we have the opportunity to resequence these?
So when we do the facilities plan, we can include surveying and during that process where they can go out and collect hard data, we can identify. This is kind of like low resolution. We can get high resolution like, you know, maybe in the residential. You know, it's only seventy-five percent is is this bad. So it'll get, as we move forward through the facilities plan, it'll get cleaner and we'll be able to identify what needs to be prioritized.
I'm fine with that, but if we already identified three that we would like to change, then I think we could change it now if that's what the board wants.
Yeah, I'm fine with changing what we're doing today, but there's. I think what I'm hearing from Stephen is when we get to that micro review, we'll do priority versus proximity. There might be some other drivers to.
Probably some more movement on the list.
But I'm fine with the three that we've we've identified today to make those adjustments, just.
Which was one twenty and then?
Seventy-six, I believe, or seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight. That's two. Is there a third?
I think it was two.
Uh, no.
Was there a third?
I thought there was two. One, one, one twenty.
One twenty.
One twenty, gully greens.
We mentioned that.
This will come back at each design phase. I don't know, you do thirty, sixty, ninety, Stephen, or twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five?
Yeah, I mean, when we get to the design phase.
The actual like picking, once we get to that detail, but as long as the board has approved to do all of the red and move forward with facilities, we can come back um and give you updates.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're good with that.
Okay, one last thing. You mentioned that I missed it, the Avila Road project.
Yeah, that's actually an agenda item on, I think it's seven F. So hang tight for that one unless you guys want to handle that now.
No, we'll wait.
We'll wait.
All right. I'll let Fred, um, he's on call right now to talk about the modeling.
One second, Stephen. Where are we on the I seventy-five crossing as it relates to the blockage that we had on the east side? Is that done now?
Eighty-four's?
I'm sorry?
Those eighty-four's?
No, right ahead of the two box culverts going across I seventy-five on the east side. We had all that restriction there.
Yeah, that's the eighty-four's. I was talking about those two box culverts.
Yeah, I think they're four by eights.
I know you mentioned this at the last time I was here.
Somebody said that that is plugged up again. What? I I don't know how that happened. I thought we got that all cleaned out.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We'll take a look at it.
We need to look at those, but there's those, those, those are our restriction to keep water from leaving this community.
Would we, would we physically?
I thought we figured that out.
Or I'm just saying just to inspect it or would we drone that or what would we?
Well, I'll find out from L.
Yeah, you can walk over there and look at it. The issue is.
I'll wear my muck boots.
You should keep a pair.
Just don't fall down that, don't fall down that hill. Uh, yeah, with that. That, I know we did everything on the west side. We got that cleaned out. We got the 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 channel cleared out all the way back to the the main pond.
Yep.
And we got those four eighty-four's cleaned out. So the only thing that we have is an Achilles heel right now other than the pipe size itself under I seventy-five is the uh obstruction in front of the the pipes.
That's the cork in the bottle.
That's the.
In front of the four eighty-four's? In front of the four eighty-four's?
It's in front of the two four by eight box culverts going under I seventy-five.
Gotcha.
Field trip.
Okay. I think we're good. We can move over to Fred's update.
Can you hear me okay?
Muffled.
Desmond?
You're a little muffled, Fred.
Can you hear me okay?
That's worse, much worse.
Worse?
Yeah, it's worse.
Can you hear me now?
It's not great, but we'll take it.
Okay. I'll try to keep it brief. I'm thinking parallel. We're we're designing two parallel mains in the FPL easement, both twelve inches, one's irrigation, one's force main. And we did two modeling uh reports in parallel. So they both look at uh they focus on the whole system, but we also looked again, we we modeled these previously, these new force mains. And uh they're a good idea to build in our opinion. Our recommendations are in the report in more detail. But these lines would provide redundancy, very valuable redundancy for the system, both the irrigation and the force main especially. Uh, and they do improve your hydraulics and your ability to distribute irrigation water and and trans transmit wastewater back to the plant. I I will note that as we did these studies, we learned more about the piping at the reclaimed facility, Lee County's. And that they, there are some future improvements, I believe, planned there. Those, once they do those improvements, that'll really provide that final level of benefit to the district for the wastewater side.
So. When did they say they were going to be doing that? Cause I read that contract and they haven't got any reason room on that at all. Uh, that contract is very clear that we signed with them. It's good through twenty thirty-three, that it'll take all flows that we discharge to them uh in the normal course of business and that includes peak flows. So if we take that uh twelve inch pipe that's existing and we parallel it with a twenty inch line down to their property, as far as I'm concerned, not our problem anymore. They got to take that water and figure out whatever they got to do with it. Now, they can pass some of that cost back to us, which I would anticipate and wouldn't argue with. If they're sitting there playing and arguing, they're telling you not to take it. It's not like that contract says at all. They have to take our flow, which means reasonable peak flow. Parallel picking as well and come back and hide and look for cover. Contract doesn't let them.
Yeah.
If they're saying, or working on it, or they have a plan, I think our question is, is uh, we're from Missouri, show me. Let's see it.
Yeah, I I'd be happy to, you know, help help get that dialogue going. Um, but in the meantime, uh, this project's going to take a little while to get built. I mean, we have to get the easement, but we're proceeding along that course and it does give you immediate benefits. And just the the final, the final step would be to get Lee County to do their part, in my opinion, and that would really complete the story.
Fred, that was my question is the, our work effort, is that in in parallel with Lee County's plan?
I I honestly don't have their CIP, uh, but I I do want to see it and talk to someone, uh, Nathan Beals. I haven't spoken to him yet, but if you, if the district would like me to reach out to Lee County, I I can take the first step on that.
Well, we we have separate issues. The twenty inch line would give us great redundancy and protection. Does not necessitate an equal, that's what I understand, that we need it. The line through the FPL easement until we can get FPL treatment from WCI. Yeah, once we get that, we don't need it easier.
Correct.
Uh, also we have to just get confirmation with uh FPL that we don't have any restrictions with them. So I think these can go separate. I'm just scared to death that we're going to have a line break like we had three or four years ago that was disastrous.
So the intent of these modelings was to get them in front of the board. Um, we're at a hundred percent design. Um, we have the engineer's recommendation. If the board wishes for us to continue that and go into design for these different items, we can do that. Put in with that task authorizations for that. Um, but based on redundancy. Yes. Need the other one right now? No, because we have to find out where Lee County is with regards to their improvements, but we can have those conversations. Or we can go into design and kind of have it shovel-ready.
I'd I'd see it at least on the week night, which line, they don't have any you know, in the game on the other one. But on the twenty one line, we get our plans in such a position that we just go over there to them and say, here we are. Where's, what are you doing? Handle this part. That's not our problem, that's their problem. And they can't, they can't hide from it. They can go out, they can bond finance, they can pay cash, they can do whatever they want. And pay our share back or charge our share back, but they cannot deny us according to that contract.
I I think we're, because we've had this. Uh, I think there's a support of this initiative. Is there something from us in emotion or just uh just direction to move?
The next steps, like I said, would be touch tech bringing back um task authorizations. I know you, you guys aren't through design, are you, on these?
Yeah, we were authorized for design. That's on our status report. We we are designing these mains.
They're through design.
Okay.
So we'll get it, you know, a hundred percent design and then we can have it shovel-ready, ready to put out to bid and then go from there.
Does the board have any?
You don't, we don't need motion. We're good right now.
Great. Uh, any additional questions for Fred? Just while we're talking about that and additional updates on the roundabout, the fountain design, any of that stuff?
We should be receiving the final one hundred percent design back here in the next week or two. Spoke to Dave Murphy yesterday. Um, and that will be the final set of plans that goes out to bid. So they're hoping to get that out to bid very, very soon.
Okay.
They might move up early start in December, move it up earlier.
Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, while they're in final design, can we just, if we haven't already, can we just stress the fact we do not want shell and?
They've accepted the artificial turf alternative of for the for the um fountain.
Okay, that'd look like crap. We could call those shells out there.
Yeah, uh, anyway, we can encourage them to maybe apply that to other roundabouts and.
They will turn around and tell us that landscaping is our responsibility.
Well, technically it's not for the Griffin.
That's the school.
The school is different, but any, anything that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. Uh, so nothing else for you, Fred. Uh, thanks engineers for uh for attending today and being onsite. Um, we've got some other items. Are you sticking around?
He's going to stay for the availability.
You're going to stick around for a little bit, Stephen? Yeah. Okay, uh, we will move on to staff reports. And Chelsea, I'll I'll let you kind of direct.
Okay, so.
The order of operations for them.
So provided you have the parks and rec, you have admin, you have utilities. Staff report. Um, it was asked earlier about the update of the Pelican uh access road.
Yep. Construction.
We are from, the response we got back from Rick from Homantes today was, we've issued, the city of Fort Myers has issued the permit from them. We're waiting on the blessing from Lee County. We did have to do a resubmital. We expect that permit to be issued very, very soon. They're waiting on the final fire department uh blessing. So we have reached out to some contractors for pricing. Um, but as we need, we're.
We're keeping things moving in the background, so once the permits are issued, we're going to be ready to go.
Yes.
What's, I mean.
Well, let me, let me expand on that because it's, once the LDO is issued, then the contractor that's selected has to go forward and apply for a right-of-way permit. And so typically what would happen is the paving contractor would apply for the right-of-way permit as the prime. And then the electrical contractor and the fencing contractor would be subs to that.
Yeah.
So there's still some more permitting to go, but the biggest hurdle of the LDO, I see the end of the tunnel.
Like very close.
The land acquisition is the real end of the tunnel.
That's where the pressure needs to be applied, I guess, and anything we can do to accelerate that would help us move everything forward.
We will emphasize that to Charles Mann.
Thank you.
So um, if you have any questions, uh, I don't believe there were any uh items for board attention or direction from staff, but these will be the means of how staff provides updates on all projects or anything that they've been working on over the past month.
Can you give us a staff update? Uh, just in general, new ads, any?
Sure. Um, we have one new utilities position or one of the utilities positions was filled on the, his name is Emilio. He started last week. The second one will be starting Monday, so we, at this point, we're, we should be fully staffed on the utility side. Uh, I did hire the contracts manager, Randy. He's coming from the beach. He will be starting on August first. Um, I think I reported at the last meeting that Tim was promoted to recreation manager. And then uh last week we made an offer and it was accepted over the weekend for a new public works director and he will be starting uh the day after Labor Day, so September sixth. Um, his name is Keith. I can let it all right.
Yes.
Yeah, he works for, he currently works for ACOM because he gave his notice there yesterday, so it's okay to say so. ACOM, the company that we have, we're Mark, who's our Scott right now. Um, he's act, Keith is actually Mark's boss currently. So he has a ton of experience. Keith Riddle.
AE COM is an engineering firm and I personally worked with Keith on a handful of projects. Um, he is not APE, he is a general contractor. Um, he has a thirty-plus years of experience with project management, stormwater. I couldn't ask for a better, better fit.
All the things that that he has experienced and are things that we do here in the district. So he was perfect.
Somebody else has had these problems?
So I didn't see the problems.
Keith is very excited to start. Um, like he wanted to give ample notice to AE COM. He's, he's been with them for a very long time, so we're very excited. We are making some adjustments. We have to review our vehicles and making sure everybody has.
He was short a few vehicles. We're trying to shuffle around to make sure that everybody has transportation.
And office space and so.
Yeah, so does this put us? So does this put us at, what do we have open?
So we have a couple vacancies in our Parks and Rec department. Um, we are very, very short staff.
Yeah, it's Tim at the pool right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's Tim is a one-man show at the pool right now.
So there's two vacancies in Parks and Rec.
Three.
Three.
And are these, these are just hourly positions?
There, yeah, there are. It's one part-time and then two full-time.
Well, pulled, well, I think they're revising the job description, but.
We have one, there is a part-time pool attendant opening and then we took the other positions and made them recreation maintenance positions. And so basically it'll be kind of like what Rick is doing, but they'll be trained to work up at the pool as well. So we'll have three people that can flex for evening, weekend.
Give us just a high level like requirements, like is there, what what's a, what's a require? Is there any skills required for these?
High school education.
Yeah.
Um, handy with tools.
Must be eighteen or older.
Yeah, should be eighteen because of chemicals.
Um, we are not requiring, but uh seeking anybody with a.
AFO or CPO.
Um, pool operator license. Um, but definitely some landscape maintenance background and.
Basic mechanical skills would be really helpful.
And the reason why I say this, if you have friends, kids, grandkids, um, could be a good opportunity for a part-time gig.
The two full-time maintenance position, the recreation maintenance positions are technically in the budget for next fiscal year. This department has been so short-staffed, finding a part-time anything right now is difficult. Finding a full-time is less difficult. So what we've done, because we have the budget available, is advertised for the full-time, one of the full-time positions now and.
There, there are three part-time positions for at the pool right now, so we basically combined two of the part-time together to for the full-time.
Reach out to, um, reach out to the career center at FGCU.
We have.
You have? Okay.
And I've had stuff.
Okay, perfect. All right. Um, I just want to congratulate staff um on all the work that you've done to get these positions filled. You know, that's, it's not easy during this time period uh to find talent. It's a very challenging market, so all of our critical roles are taken care of. We even had some, some new additions that's going to add additional value uh to the district. So, you know, thank you both and staff for uh for pushing forward on this.
When those employees start, we'll get them in front of you guys.
Which, which will lead us to other conversations later on, you know, uh, the impact of uh of our, of our staff size. Um, do you have anything else from your, uh, any questions for, for Chelsea or Laura?
Any of the monthly reports?
Nope.
Okay. Fantastic. So we'll move on to our administrative agenda. So we'll, we'll jump into uh seven A, uh, conveyance to the district of Palazzo Way.
Hopefully the memorandum, the cover memorandum was uh.
Hopefully the memorandum, the cover memorandum was, uh, self explanatory as to the state where, state, stage where we are now with regards to this. And if Stephen can, I think can verify or validate, confirm that the work in the, uh, that protected the report that's included in the, uh, agenda packet from September of, uh, twenty twenty one. And I believe all the work that was identified, valley gutters, etc., was all performed to the satisfaction of the district's engineers. Is that correct, Stephen?
So legal approves, engineering approves, staff approves.
Correct. So the requested action is to adopt the resolution, uh, that's included in the, in the agenda packet with regard to this conveyance to accept the road subject to the, um, comments and the recommendations made at page two of that agenda item with regards to the various documents.
And I so moved.
Second motion to do that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to seven B, uh, this is Matarita Four and Cypress Grove Extension Conveyance.
Yes, so I'll take this one. Chelsea Riley, district manager. Um, when I first started, uh, we had some, uh, communications from Lennar WCI of some outstanding bonds, performance bonds that they were hoping to get released. Man, did I learn a lot about. Bonds and performance bonds. This is requesting, uh, the approval. Uh, turnover and of the conveyance of Matarita Four and Cypress Grove Extension. So as part of the packet, it should be self explanatory that, um, it looks like this was brought in front of you in late September, uh, last year. Uh, the board tabled it, waiting for the Cypress, uh, Grove Drive Extension to have the final lift. So, um, we're just looking for this approval.
Yeah, the other thing that we had in the past was a couple of pipes that weren't completed. That held up probably more than anything. And Stephen, they're on, they're now completed.
I believe that's.
The Matarita pipes that were short.
Yeah, and for, and for the records, we have a trail down the road, uh, even though WSI's council said they were going to send a letter confirming what they would do. We never got it. But it's two pipes, uh, Lake seventy six and seventy seven, I believe. And the one pipe were short and neither pipe had the requisite flared end section. And Stephen, you've confirmed that the pipe length has been extended to meet the approved plans and the flared end sections have been installed.
Yes, and that letter memo from Tech for Tech is included in this packet. So there's, so we can wrap this, this off our plate.
Yeah.
Council approves, engineering approves, staff approves.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, moving on to C, master landscape policy. Seven C.
So this.
That's right. Uh, this, this was something Chelsea and I and. Sorry, Chelsea and I and Tim, uh, met with, what was the name of the company? Oh, we met with a company, um, to request them to give us a proposal to develop a master landscaping plan.
Insight.
Insight, insight, um, to develop a master la- landscape plan for Gateway. Uh, they got it back to us. It was very expensive. And so we politely told them that it was well outside of our budget and thanked them and said we will not be moving forward. So that was that item. So.
Just out of curiosity, what was the number?
Hundred and seventy six thousand dollars.
And that was for?
Just to develop the plans, not to even.
It was, it was surveying, staff reviewing prior adopted plans and then come, um, making up a new.
So we're gonna work with the.
At least the second, about the third time we've done, tried to do a master landscape plan. Because remember a couple of years ago?
So.
Well, and I think it was a week before that, where we actually had.
We together.
Well, because I do remember, and Bill, I don't know if you recall, but I think it was maybe four years ago, four or five years ago, we had someone come in. They started doing some initial design.
From West Palm Beach of some for Florida.
We got to like one phase, which was like maybe Griffin Drive. And then we didn't move, we didn't go anywhere from that. I think, if I were to take a guess, I think it had to do with cost. Um, and, and our ability to action, because there was, there was other things that were in the works.
I think irrigation was a problem too.
Irrigation that could influence it.
They couldn't come up with a plan.
Once we started pulling back irrigation, we had, yeah.
Okay, so the, the intent of this, and I believe it's still there, and that's where we'd like really direction from the board, is this is gonna take a lot of staff time. And ultimately, putting together a master landscape policy from the staff perspective is beneficial, because then, once the board adopts that policy, if there are issues that arise within the community that we need replaced or even as far as a maintenance plan, putting this together and moving forward with it. So we can continue to look at other companies. We have the Arborist that's on, uh.
He's on retainers. We pay him a monthly fee. We might as well. We don't have a restriction for hours.
I think, is there a way that we can, we can cut this baby in half a couple of ways? One, I think what we need is, we need a, almost just like a style guide. So what plants, what trees? If maybe we can start there, because that might allow us to, there's, there's certainly, if we need to replace something, or what we, it's, or if we need to replace something, what we should not do, you know, we've talked about the, um, a couple of different plans as far as trees and stuff. So, and I think we've kicked that a little bit already. So maybe we can, you guys, and I'm not gonna tell you, I'm not gonna drag you on this because it's outside of my, any type of scope of experience I have. But maybe kick it back to staff, say, is there a proper way that we can phase this, where we can, you know, chisel out a piece at a time that still adds value, allows us to give direction to staff? And, you know, I'm sure L and some others probably have a lot of knowledge around if, if something dies, what to replace it with, but we need a, we need a guy.
So. Can staff do it? Yes. It's, it's gonna take time. We do have some areas within the community right now that are bare. And I'm sure some of you are aware of some trees that were previously removed and we've gotten some inquiries regarding when those replacements are gonna be done. So what, what we can do is we can start with those or we can tackle this policy, or we can continue to try to find a vendor that could do it.
I have another alternative potentially, and I don't know if it's viable. Um, but is this an individual that we could hire on contract, whether it's six or twelve months? That could potentially do this and you, you'd cut the vendor cost out. Um, yep.
Here, based upon the, the price that I choked on.
Yeah. Me too.
Yeah, the, uh, under the competitive consultants negotiation act, you can hire a landscape architect, professional in that field to do a planning or studying activity without going through the competitive selection process. If it's less than seventy five thou-, less than thirty five thousand.
I didn't even talk.
No, less than thirty five thousand. So the question is if you contact with somebody, it's independent contractor. If it's more than thirty five thousand, you need to solicit and put that out.
Well, what I was saying is like, it would be, uh, it would, it would be a district position. And we would hire someone to, that would be an employment of the district, but it would be a contract role for certain amount of time. So not like contracting up. So kind of saying the same things, but.
I think, I think that's always pretty slow.
So let, let me, let me help reel this in. Is there a desire of the board to do a master landscape policy?
I say yes, but.
Dollar value.
Well, well, not only that, but we have irrigation infrastructure that we're looking to do. So which do we do first? Do we do irrigation plan and?
No, you gotta do the landscape plan first, because then that drives what kind of your.
Where are the irrigation?
Yeah, and I think that's exactly what happened, you know, before was, you know, you have to resent all this landscaping. I think we had some money to do the landscaping, but not irrigation, which was pointless. Yeah.
Well, we got a number in mind, working backwards, of what we are envisioning to expend on this plan that we come up with. Because that's going to tell you real quickly what you're gonna get. So if you're, you're, you've got somebody that's gonna be doing a fee, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, using some of the rules of thumb of the business. He's gonna come in with a million dollar plan. Does that get anybody to choke?
Your mainscape contract's a million dollars.
Well, mainscape, that's maintenance. That's not a new plan. A little bit different.
Well, it would be included as part of the landscape policy plan, would be a maintenance plan.
Yeah, well, I was just trying to figure out if we come out and propose to put in a million dollars worth of plantings.
Well. Let me just, let me just throw this in, because Pelican as a community is wrestling with this right now. Uh, our community's twenty years old. We have needs. We don't agree yet on all the needs, but we know we have focused on some areas where we need some outside expertise. And I believe the landscape work group has already been authorized, not the landscape work group, P-PAC has authorized a hundred thousand dollars for the coming year to get some professional design help. It'll help.
Just the fees.
Just, just, just to get design help, a hundred thousand dollars. We have bandied about numbers between three hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars, depending on how big they go into things. Whether they're gonna redesign Colonial Boulevard and Tree Line, or whether we're gonna just focus on Pelican Reserve and Tree Line. So it's big money when you're doing it. But we face with the same need, but the first step I, I think right now, there's, they've got a hundred thousand dollars authorized in the twenty twenty three budget, coming out of capital reserves to do that study.
Is, is there a desire, is there a desire to do a master landscape?
That's not just the study that I misrepresented.
So the question, I'm sorry, Phil.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry if I misrepresented. That's what I thought I heard.
So the question that staff has to us is is, is that what the board directions?
We need to do it. We need to.
Do anything else until you start with it.
And you, and that's, I agree that we need to do it. And then it, that's, you know, what they're complaining and we can leave it up. We'll be here, we'll listen to the residents when we get the cost. And if this is, if it's a million dollars, then, then here it is. We got you the plan, we got this, but you have to spend some type of money to come up to our residents and say, look, we went out there. We understand that, you, you know, your complaints and, and they are valid. I mean, the stuff is, you know, thirty four years old planting material that is survived five to ten years. It's there, it's nothing but, so we, I, I believe we need it. That doesn't mean that we're gonna go ahead and do it all once. No. And then I think I'd say phase it out whenever the time comes, but.
What we can do to, to help alleviate with the sticker shock, because I had it as well, is we can narrow the scope and maybe start with just the Griffin and Gateway.
Couple areas, pilot areas.
Couple areas.
Well, you tell the guy that's giving you, quoting you a fee and which gives him some ideas to the scope of the work that he's going to be doing. You're gonna tell him a lot. So if you tell him it's gonna be a million dollars, you're gonna see a one point seven or two hundred thousand dollar fee. You tell him it's gonna be three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand, you're gonna see something substantially less.
So what?
I think he needs guidance of what we are willing. Don't come back with a Taj Mahal design because we haven't got the money to do it.
Well, and I think part of that design process would be involving the public with public meeting in this type of setting, getting input from the board.
The Arborist.
Arborist, exactly. So, um, if the board is clear with their direction that we, we bring back a, a task authorization for a master landscape policy to get us underway, um, we'll make sure that it meets all CCNA rules and regulations. But, um, if, if that's the direction, we'll continue.
And this could be our, this could be our, our, our master plan, phase one, um, as we, as we can design it.
Are you, are we looking for a policy or for?
An actual design, an actual design.
Yeah, I think we're looking for some.
In my mind, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, like you, you mentioned styles, you know, starting to narrow that down. And then, you know, going so far into the weeds as to, okay, if it's a three foot wide median, you do this. If it's four foot wide, you do this. If it has, if it's fifty foot right of way, you know, this is what you do. Um, I think that, those weeds, we can get to down the road closer to a hundred percent design. But at least getting something in paper, looking at the revitalization plan that was done years ago, and then the original development of Gateway. That kind of gives some guidance as to the, the field. And you drive around Gateway and you kind of know what field is.
And because what we have to keep in, so that plan would also, um, be dictated by any irrigation plans that we have.
Yes.
Right? So, and chicken and egg a little bit, but we want to optimize that as much as possible.
What we've been doing is we've been making the updates to landscaping throughout Gateway is also redoing the irrigation at that time in those areas to make sure that the irrigation meets the needs of the new landscaping. So.
Because one of the areas for me, not, not to go sideways, but, you know, when we look at irrigation, I want to figure out a way that we can stop watering sidewalks and roads.
Agreed.
You know, so that's just different heads. It's different things of that nature. And, and so, um, and I don't know if there's, if they're mutually exclusive as far as landscape design and, and irrigation, or someone that can.
A, a lot of it is getting rid of the battery operated controllers. So once we start getting those, the regular controllers in place, that will help because they have to stagger the watering because of the demand on the water and the battery, it's, it's a mess. But once.
Your biggest problem you get is the area you're trying to wet. If you've got two zones, one that's on the backside of the sidewalk, and then the one between the curb and the sidewalk, lots of luck. You're gonna get the sidewalk wet. That's all there is to it. Or you have two separate sets of lines, which then gets out of hand on the cost.
So if I could just have clear direction from the board?
Yes, so the direction for the board is to proceed with, um, uh, with the master design plan uh, to give staff authorization to move forward, move forward on a master design plan. Okay, perfect. Well, that, that item that had no supporting information, this took us like thirty minutes.
And he didn't put any conditions on that. So you're, you're wide open.
Yeah. Uh, let's go to seven D, the soccer agreement and field parking discussion.
So before we dive into this, um, we found a couple, uh, tweaks that we had to make as part of the actual agreement itself. One of them being that the agreement verbiage, when it was originally sent out, contradicts the adopted fee schedule, which, uh, was with regards to payment terms. Um, and then there were a couple, a couple other ancillary updates that needed, like for instance, we, we come up with the rate based on the roster that's provided from the leagues, depending on if they're resident or non-resident. So that's, we need that roster in order to calculate the fee. So we need that in advance in order to give it to them so they can pay us within thirty days of prior to commencement. So, um, as you can see, these are the majority of leagues that you've seen in the past. And if there's any questions, we're here to answer.
Is, is the fee schedule based on forty percent resident participation, fifty percent? What, what are the increments in changing of cost to a league?
It's, we haven't changed the fee schedule. It's based on the adopted fee schedule that's, uh, been in place since two thousand and eighteen, which I can.
I think there's just, there's a fee.
It's a per, it's a per player fee.
For non-residents.
For non-residents.
Okay, that's fine.
Per player fee.
One time per season.
Not for family, but per player.
It's per player, per, per season. So like if, um.
I think it's annually though.
It's, well, it is annually. So I consider the season the whole, from like August till whenever they stop in May. So it's just a one time.
Ballpark, what is that fee?
It's thirty dollars.
Oh, thirty bucks.
Yeah, thirty, yeah, thirty, thirty or thirty five.
That's in a, uh, essence of surcharge.
Yes.
It's, uh, and, and with that, you know, one thing that Laura and Chelsea have tried to do is look at all the policies that we have in place, period. And the leagues are one of those, where what our contract stipulates is what we should be managing to. Now, our leagues, in my opinion, they provide a service. Um, there's been some areas of flexibility around payment. Uh, I, and I get it. Um, they have to complete registration or they have the funds to be able to pay or whatever. So what, what staff is doing is saying, here's what the contract says, this is what we're gonna manage to. Um, if there were some conditions in the past, we're gonna manage to the contract and it's up to us as a board through staff recommendation or, or league recommendation to, to amend that as we go forward.
Okay.
Which makes perfect sense, right?
I had a language in about share proportions you're necessary for additional law enforcement.
Yes.
That, that was.
The parking patrol.
The parking patrol. So that's, she added that.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is we're identifying areas, uh, areas of concern, um, whether that's liability risk or just, you know, costs incurred by the district, um, and looking to, um, allocate that back, or at least a portion of it back to the, to leagues to be able to cover that. So.
And we're, we're also trying to do a better job of enforcing, uh, the terms that are in the agreements that the leagues sign because we've been, we've been getting there, but we're not a hundred percent there yet. There, it's there. They signed off, but there's a lot of pushback.
And I'm hoping with the change in, uh, in Parks and Rec leadership, that we'll be able to work closely with the leagues. Because again, they do provide a service, you know, um, it's our, you know, I think our obligation to make sure they're successful. But at the same time, we have guidelines.
What do, what do we need to do right now? Do we need?
So it would be approving these, uh, agreements, field use agreements for these specific leagues and authorizing the district manager to execute those lease agreements.
And I'll show move.
Target.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, I.
One, one quick thing. So by approving these, what we're, and this goes through, what's the terms link here, remind me?
Uh, they go until the end of May, I think.
End of May.
So, and staff will continue to look at. So, and staff will continue to look at opportunities for these fields, whether it's, you know, we've talked about having a, a third party manage the fields. I think now that we're fully staffed, they can start to resurrect some of that conversations. I think we, we broke these up to now because we were thinking about doing, maybe bidding these out or doing something like that. So we're just going to have to continue with this, let staff do their thing, but they are, they are, that is still a part of their.
Okay, that has totally.
That hasn't changed. They're, you know, they're looking at opportunities across the board. Okay, moving on to 7E, capital project loan disbursement.
This is just my annual, or my annual, my monthly request for reimbursement from the loan for capital expenses that were paid out. It would have been through the 11th of July.
Why, why in 50%, greater than 50% contingency? What am I missing there?
82,500 of that was the escrow deposit that we had to put down for the land. You're welcome.
Okay. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, no. 7F, task authorization FY 2022-11. This is the Avila resurfacing.
Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. This task authorization is to complete the design bidding and there's some construction oversight for the resurfacing of Avila Circle. This road is in Pelican Preserve. There's two access points to Pelican Preserve Boulevard, approximately 2,800 feet. It's got a lot of cracking on it and it needs to be resurfaced.
What's the life on this road so far?
It's one of our first communities.
I mean ballpark. Because we're, we're running over Gateway. We're saying around 22 years that we should be getting out of the road. Does it meet that deal?
Every bit of 22 years.
It does a little more.
So this is at the request of P-PAC and that P-PAC did approve it.
Because it's outside of our spending threshold, authorization, our authorization threshold. We need some permission from the board to give them the okay to move forward.
Capital reserve.
And P-PAC is paying for it.
What is Phil?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Have a motion.
Again.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, any further discussion, questions?
P-PAC's had a lot of discussion.
Yes, they have.
A lot.
That's why that gets hammered out before it comes here.
Yep.
At least most of the time. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Stephen. Is that it for Stephen's? Is there?
Yep.
Okay. All right. You can take all. Thanks. Uh, the next is the sidewalks on Griffin.
Yes.
I love talking about sidewalks on Griffin.
Fantastic. So we actually, Laura and I actually had a call with Lee County this morning for the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. I'm a huge proponent of brands. I'm a huge proponent of other people, specifically Lee County paying for benefits to Gateway. Lee County has a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, which is an advisory committee to their Board of County Commission. Gas tax and road impact fees. They have a pot of money to make improvements to new, new improvements throughout Lee County. I was looking on aerials the other day and I noticed that this area from basically the elementary school to the Gateway Boulevard on this side of the road does not have any sidewalks. Everywhere else on Griffin had sidewalks. This would be, this item, if approved, would give direction to staff to pursue a request to bicycle pedestrian advisory committee to put on, make a project and put on their five-year plan, 10-year plan, whatever it may be, to get sidewalks installed on this side of Griffin Drive connecting, doing the final connection piece from Gateway Boulevard to the elementary school. I will tell you that they already have another project on their list. I believe it's ranked pretty high.
It was 26, 146?
Yep. And it's for the area in front of Gartner on Gateway Boulevard. That was at the request of a resident. Any residents, any public can go to this bicycle pedestrian advisory committee and make a request. And then they put it on their list for review. Just an overview of their process is you make the request, their board reviews it, ranks it. They take that recommendation to Department of Transportation. Department of Transportation reviews based on their allotment for that upcoming fiscal year. Best case scenario, if this were to go through that process, design would, if it ranked high enough, would be five years out. Unless the powers that be chose to expedite that. So all, the only action that this item would be requesting is to give staff direction to make the request for the sidewalks.
Keep, keeping in mind that if you can go out and let's say get a grant or get one of those others, I, I don't have a problem, but we're opening a little bit of a Pandora's box here. This would be the only road in Gateway. It's got parallel sidewalks on both sides. We don't have it anyplace else. And there's any place that we really need it, it's down there from the school, from Daniels all the way back at least to Griffin Drive.
Is that the one that's covered in Gartner?
Yes.
But it's going, it's going always 711?
I believe so, but I have to.
That's the issue that we had similar reach, like they don't have a pedestrian sidewalk.
It was from, from in front of Gartner up to Griffin Drive.
That one's already highly ranked.
Well, just having this committee or commission, BPAC sounds great.
Yeah.
Apply for it.
Yeah. And I'll just throw one more thing in there. And I don't, I'm not saying that we throw a hat in here, but at some point, we're going to have to talk about bicycle traffic on our roads. I think our sidewalks, because of their width.
Well, you got to watch the turn. A lot of our sidewalks are not defined as sidewalks. They're paths.
Shared use path.
They're shared use paths. So we got to watch that.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying, shared use, however they're dictated. In any given time, you can see a golf cart, you can see walkers, you can see somebody riding a bike.
And all of them.
And I would much rather someone be on the sidewalk riding a bike than on the road here because there is nowhere for you to go. Especially if you're going past hidden links down towards 82. You've got curbing on the side.
There's no two-foot.
I mean, the only bailout is grass and that's after you're going over the handlebars hitting the, the curbing. So.
Or the bumper.
Yeah, yeah, hitting the bumper.
The under of the car.
So I don't know if there's just something we can politely, you know, approach Lee County on. I don't know if they've done a study. I don't know if there's any consideration. In order to do that, I'm sure there's some widening that would happen.
I think if you're going to them, I would go with them, go to them with a plan for the whole thing and get it done.
So they would do the design. They would fund all of that. This would simply be making this a request of a project for them to get it on their list.
And the reason why I caution, because I didn't, I didn't want to muddy the water with other projects that might get delayed if we come in with too big of a scope or if we just break them up pieces, but that's something I, I think we've all.
Well, I'll make a motion and staff move forward with this.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm going to do a plug for Lee County BPAC because I've known those guys a while. They have some vacancies on their board for the public if you're interested in joining that board. It's a, it's a pretty diverse board, but they address all really bicycle pedestrian paths in Lee County.
Can we post, can we post that on our Facebook page? And then if, if P-PAC or Pelican, because you've got a lot of probably some expertise over there from things that you've done. Just make sure that it gets out both to Gateway and to Pelican, if there's anyone interesting volunteering.
Are they definitely talking about a shared use path as opposed to a sidewalk? Because that would definitely the way I would like to see it, but as there is.
The board can give me clear direction on what, what they would like to make up the ask. We can do that.
Yeah, what's the difference between that and multi-modal?
I don't know what that term is.
We use the term multi-modal.
Shared use path, at least then, like Doug said, you've got them all on there, but you're going to be looking at a minimum eight-foot width.
Can we, because I don't know, can, is.
We have the eight-foot width and we have went through this for C5. In Pelican Hillside, Tree Line, and they had to put it in, but it's multi-modal.
A lot of the.
Well, remember 82, when they built it, they said they were going to put in two paths. The north side of the road would be stripped with a, what do you call it? Sidewalk outside would be the wider shared use path for like golf carts and bikes.
And we got the wider on both.
Just for information, following up on what Chelsea was saying, on the committee, the ranking, I guess, is ranking that yesterday. They ranked it 20th. And the one for Daniel, I mean, on Gateway Boulevard, it was, the project was added in 2018. It's number 26 on the list. From Professional Park Drive to Griffin Drive, it says, 4,752 feet, shared use path.
Okay.
So east, east side. And that's just.
Shared use is pedestrians, bikes and golf or not?
That's the way I understand it. It's all three.
So yesterday, we were having the prioritization yesterday, it looks like.
So to, to answer your question, depending if it's a six-foot sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk, or if it's a shared use path, a lot of that is if they can get, if the county can get grant funding from what pot. Because what pot of money they take it out of will be determined on what type of path it is. So if the board has a preference, we can say we prefer this, here's our alternative. Keeping in mind, regardless, it's the county's road, they're going to say what they want.
Our, our deal is, the reason I think we want to go shared use path, shared use path is to get out around the issue of golf carts and registration versus LSVs. We do not have.
Shared use means you want golf carts that have access?
Yeah. Well, golf carts can't go on the road. They can't go.
Okay, well, now that's, this is consistent. I'm trying to get the terms consistent in my head. Because we have access, we're, we will eventually have as a community, access to the Winn-Dixie shopping center. That's why the multi-modal path was in the DRI and that's why C5, whoever just built that, had to put it. They didn't go all the way to Winn-Dixie. The next.
So you can go to Winn-Dixie with, with a golf cart that's not street legal, because you're saying on the side.
When this is completed.
That's what I would be able to do also.
And I don't know if we have this, maybe some of you guys might know. I'd love to see for all of our sidewalks that we have in Gateway, what are they designated? I don't know. I don't know what they're all designated. I don't know. That would be, if there's a side project, I'd love to know.
The board wants us to do that? We all, we all do that?
Put it on your list. I mean, it's a low.
We got a motion to accept this and move forward with that.
Since we don't have many, I don't think it's going to be too big of a challenge.
We have a motion to, to move forward with.
Staff going to the BPAC.
Yes. Motion. Do you have a second? Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Just one quick question, Chelsea. Do you have anybody on that committee or no?
They have representatives from all of the municipalities. I mean, I don't, I'd have to go back and look.
How big's that?
It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good sized committee.
Yeah, because I think Diana Geraldo was, it's on that committee and she's.
We need to get somebody on that committee. So let's move on to H, release of development.
October 10. October 10. That's a pretty good size. Again, this is reiterating earlier. So some of the Solaro, Pistoia and Matarita two-way are long overdue. Their 10% retainer that we kept for these passed some time ago, years ago, it seems like. So this is just authorizing the district manager to release the 10% of those.
So everyone.
Tony, is there no chance, legal chance to get that light pole out of that guy's driveway?
No, it's in, that light pole is in the right of way, I mean, excuse me, the easement for, I think for utilities. It's, it's a design issue. No, I mean, we can't.
And it didn't grow up either.
That's correct. We don't have.
They're all.
It was there before the house was available.
That's going to be one of my items for our streetlight meeting, but okay.
Yeah, that's true. If you recall that cul-de-sac, I think all the streetlights were installed before any of the houses were constructed. And then the, then the driveway was sort of built around it.
They put it in the guy's driveway.
Well, the driveway was sort of built around it.
Okay.
But that's the one that's in the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
And, and I know that for removing you, like, and you wouldn't be willing to pay to relocate it across to the cul-de-sac because then you wouldn't lose the light. You're just, instead of being in his driveway.
There's one on each side of the cul-de-sac. So the one guy has it in his driveway. On the other side of the cul-de-sac, it's.
But you don't have, you don't have anything, you don't have any landscaping in the middle of the cul-de-sac? Because that's what I'm seeing.
I don't recall.
Usually.
I don't recall. Bill, is it there or not?
Nothing.
Yeah, but is there landscaping in the middle?
Hey guys, we're going to stop interacting with audience. No offense to you guys are, are here all the time. I appreciate it, but we have to stop.
I think, I think what might be helpful then when you have the streetlight conversation, pull up all those leap aerials and this spectometry ones, you can see the progression.
Yeah, I already had a note for Chelsea about that, but.
Yeah, we had that.
So I have a.
Fun discussion. We have a motion to accept.
I need a second. I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So now we don't have any more of their money or bond money?
No.
Okay. We'll be getting some more for our role with them.
We have, we still have some.
Some more, there's some more.
Okay.
All right. So moving on to I. So who's, which one did you take?
This one's fun. You can take it.
You want to rock, paper, scissors?
I'm working in the background. I'll, I'll let her be.
So as, as you all are aware, we have an office trailer modular that is right behind this building. It was purchased in 2020, installed, it was brand new. Last, the tail end of last year, had some mushrooms started to show up through the flooring. It had some issues. It was remediated through insurance. That was $29,000, $1,000, which we had to pay out of our pocket. Seven months later, they're back. And we have looked at many alternatives. We looked at remediating it again. Our insurance wouldn't cover the full cost, another $30,000 worth of remediating. Our insurance wouldn't cover it. The value of that trailer when brand new was $130,000. So that would be, you know, over half of the value of it. I don't see the need to continue to remediate it if it's only been seven months, because we're going to be in the same boat a year from now if we chose to do it. So this is a health, safety and welfare issue for staff and we need to get them out of that trailer as soon as we possibly can.
And this is a mold and fungus issue. So we say mushrooms, but it is a mold and fungus issue.
Mold and fungus.
And they're not morels.
Pass around the photos.
Oh, I, I do have some pictures. If you'd love to see it in person, I'd be more than happy to show you too. The, the mushrooms are the size of my fist, if not larger.
Was the design flaw in the building of this thing?
We had had nothing but problems with that modular from the minute it was set down in that spot. So it has leaked multiple places and been repaired multiple times and it's just been.
Is it, is it our negligence or bodily modular construction negligence? I mean.
It's, it's hard to say. It's hard to say. So it did have a one-year limited warranty on it. We're well beyond the one year. We actually had the company, Will Scott, out yesterday because we reached out to them, said, hey, are we the only ones with this problem? They came, they saw it themselves. They were baffled. They're like, we, we thought, you know, it might, might be the skirting. It might be, you know, an insulation issue. They took some pictures. They said, you know, they can't offer any financial assistance, but they'd be more than willing to help out with contacts and, and helping us, you know, if we were to get rid of it, try to, try to get rid of it either through a moving company or they may know somebody interested in buying it and we can tell them the auction site, but we have to get staff out of that trailer.
We put this in new, correct?
Yes.
Brand new.
Yes.
Wasn't a used one, any of that.
Correct.
Anyway, we, I don't know if we all recall, but that was supposed to be a temporary solution.
Do what?
It was a temporary solution.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, at that time, because we, again, have been talking about our facilities ahead and how we had outgrown this building for at least five, five, six years. The mushrooms have accelerated. So if you want to continue.
Fast forward, we have scoured the internet, scoured Gateway and have come across a couple of commercial leased spaces that were available for rent. Laura and I actually went and looked at two of them, one of which we have entered into an agreement to lease the space. It's actually off of Fairway Lakes Drive over kind of behind any grinds tucked in the corner. We can get in there in two to three weeks. We signed the lease yesterday with Tony's review and approval. What intent, what will happen is those staff that are in there will move here. This will stay as planned, even with the admin building being constructed down the road. This will make the operations and utilities. All of the staff that are currently in this building would move to this new leased space. So this is a two-year lease with two one-year renewals. And the property owner has been very flexible in working with us. We've come negotiated what I believe to be a fair deal. I can't, the liability that we're, if we continue to leave staff in there would far exceed the cost of this lease. So for the health, safety and welfare of staff, we believe this is the best plan of action.
And I, I concur with Chelsea on that. And that's why my, my, I've always stated that the district manager has the authority to protect the assets in the district as well as look out for the welfare of the employees. And so when circumstances arise between board meetings, I've always taken the position that for such expedited or exigent circumstances, health, safety, welfare, they have the ability to execute, negotiate. But I think it'd be helpful to have the board gratify that execution of that lease.
And that's what they're.
Do you want to give the dollar terms on that, Chelsea?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's in here, maybe, isn't it?
It's, it's around $2,000 a month.
It's about $2,200 a month.
Plus a CAM of what, 750 a month?
Well, that's with the CAM. That's with the CAM.
So I, I'd be more than happy to share that lease document to the board. It's, I think it comes out to be like.
It was around $25,000 a year.
So it would be, we could get a year's lease out of the same amount that we would, we would pay to repair this with no guarantee of it not coming back.
Yep.
And I think to your point, we can look to.
We're going to try to sell that.
Sell that. So that could probably give us at least another year or maybe even a third.
Chelsea, where do you go?
So what we're doing is Royal Auction Group, where we're. So what we're doing is, Royal Auction Group, we're working on finalizing the contract with them to provide auctioneering services. What they would do is provide an onsite auction here, with scheduled viewings of the, the modular. The part, the key part to this is that the modular has to be deemed surplus before it can go to that auction per statute. And I believe we'll be bringing that back to the next meeting, but what the request of this item is, is to ratify my decision to execute this lease for this commercial space for two years.
I make that motion.
Oh, yes.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I second.
Get the mushrooms out before they do the survey.
We have to protect the health and welfare of our employees.
Totally agree with all that, I agree. I'm dropping back a little bit to why did we buy a module, somebody had to be liable, how did this thing go bad?
That was Chris's decision to put in the modular, I think good.
We were in a wall, in a corner.
Yep.
Well, we didn't, we didn't find out where we are right now.
Well, no, I, I, I don't, but there's something fundamentally wrong that the thing room owned.
Yeah.
So, and.
And who, somebody ought to be liable for that.
That point was made by our adjuster as well, is if we did choose to go into remediation, you know, the source is still there, nobody has determined what that source is. Now, we can sit here and point fingers all day, but I, I would rather take my efforts and try to auction this off.
I agree with that, but then we need to tell them what they're buying, whoever auctioned.
It is, it is.
I mean, we can totally disclose, totally let them know.
Might not be a bad idea when we get that trailer removed, get somebody in here to look at that soil and look at the conditions, before it gets doctored up any whatsoever. Find out what was there, what's caused the problem.
No, I totally agree with the employees, let's get them out of there.
All right, let's.
I have one more.
Yes.
I have a second, so admin will move over there.
Yes.
Yes.
And then this was to be open for meetings, HR meetings, because you're probably not going to have the space there.
Correct, we'll just have offices there, yeah, this was same purpose.
This part, but we'll have to have somebody here, or, so there's some working out on that.
We're just, we're working logistics now.
If we could get that middle unit over there, that would make up and allow us to then use this, or whatever we need for them, and then handle that as a deal, if, if that.
Yeah.
Take some of the mushrooms over there.
And then remediate that.
Sprinkle around the ground.
And which will open up an opportunity for utilities to start analyzing this area, as the long-term vision is for administration to be completely out of this, re-convert this.
This is critical, this is right here, this square footage here is critical.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So in the next month, you'll see, we'll be working through some of the logistics of operations of internet and phones.
I'm, I'm meeting with our IT people at, at the new site on Monday, I have the logistics in the back of my hat and handle, and I have been working on some changes to the IT layout anyway here, and this will just push that forward a little quicker.
We'll be pushing out notices to the public, we'll be putting, you know, notes on the door, we'll be, there's, we have a honey-do list that keeps getting longer, with this transition. But I appreciate your support with, with that decision and keeping staff.
Is a vote taken, I don't know.
Yeah, we, I, I've got to call the vote, which I'll do that now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Only because I tend to forget, one other quick thing, the standpoint of the determination of it being surplus, I've drafted a resolution that should be on your next agenda, based upon the condition, the nature of it, that I think it is appropriate to deem it surplus.
And, and in order for it to be deemed for surplus, doesn't it have to be fully vacated and not, not in use or no?
No, that's part of the resolution, addresses that, that it's no longer needed for a certain purpose.
Should staff that remains there for these next couple of weeks be wearing masks, is there anything we can do to?
They.
We'll work through some of those issues.
They're, they're not in the building all day, most of them are out in the field, the majority of the day.
We had plastic before, it's probably easier than wearing a mask, just they put up, yeah, it looks.
Did what?
They, they put plastic walls everywhere, it looked like a zombie.
Well, that was when they were cleaning, doing the remediation last time.
Mainly the issues and shit off this.
All right, um, future, we got our, our, um.
Sorry?
Yes, our agenda management, so, and this is where, like, some of these items, we should, we, we're going to be tracking, right? So, so if there's ever a question, this should be our follow-up, like, these are items that should, that are on the dock, either coming or follow-up.
I've, I've notified Tetra Tech that if they do have an actionable item for the board, to notify Georgia what it is and what date they anticipate on taking it. So they're going to start adding some stuff, and I haven't yet talked to Tony, but I think this is his fair warning, that he'll be doing the same.
I love it, I love it.
We are looking at three board meetings away, I think that's been something we've been talking about for a long time, how do we keep an eye on what's coming through the agenda? How do we also be able to, you know, provide our input on something that, you know, we'd like to see.
And we're going to reevaluate the fourth meeting, probably move some of those items just because of the hearing, and try to not make it so heavy on that date. So some of these items may, may move, if the board has this, and taking this time right now, this would be the time that if you had items that maybe got lost over time, that need to come back, that would require board attention, please mention them right now, so that way we can get them on this agenda management, and we can get working on them to bring back at a future board.
And while we're looking at this, I, I wanted to remind you, I didn't think of it at the time, when you requested the closed-door session on the eighteenth, that also is the same day we were doing the public hearing for the budget, and then schedule that six o'clock.
Correct.
Okay.
So we start the regular meeting at three that, that day, then we finish the regular meeting, we probably have it at five then for the closed-door session, five to six, yes, closed door, okay, then public six.
I, that's a, that's a long day, I, can we maybe think about providing, like, sandwiches or something during the closed-door session, or something?
We can do that.
We're going to need, we're going to need something, and as a reminder, we've got our leadership workshop on the twenty-seventh, are you going to be done at ten o'clock? Or it's Thursday of your day? Are we done playing golf on Wednesday at ten, or are you skipping?
I'm skipping golf.
So, anyway, just as a reminder, really, really, really looking forward to getting together.
And on a stormy day that day.
So, to, to that point, to that leadership workshop, I'm drafting, kind of like a priorities, not necessarily priorities list from the staff perspective, but I will be distributing to you prior to that meeting, a list of things that I know that we're working on or have, and I would like for you to prioritize them. I know we've kind of danced around a strategic action plan or a management plan, this will kind of give me a little bit of guidance from the board as a collective whole, that we'll talk about on, at that leadership workshop, and give me some priorities of what you want to see moving forward in the next year.
Do we know what, do we know what room we're going to use?
I think the one thing we need to do is spend a little bit of time just rehearsing the August fourth meeting.
That's discussion topic one.
But I wondered if that's what that was.
Yeah.
And, and I think the room needs to be on this, the agenda, because we're going to post this on the district website.
Yeah.
Correct, and so I think the room number, room is important.
We will, we will try to get that in the.
Then it's our supplemental backup plan, when, what I've been told, which I've heard this at Gateway for a long time, so what are we going to do when five hundred people show up?
We're going to welcome them with smiles on.
We had a big open.
Out there in the parking lot. No, no, that's what I'm hearing, is a hell of a lot of people are going to be here, and most of it is because they don't understand what we're talking about.
We will, we will have space available for anybody that would like to come and participate in this public.
I, I, one side question, for the meeting for the FPL, that's on the first.
Yes.
Move to the first.
And that's when Keith starts.
No. No.
It's Randy, Randy, the contracts manager.
Randy, okay.
Keith doesn't start until September, the public works director doesn't start till September.
Oh, I thought you said September.
Yeah, so the day after Labor Day, that Tuesday.
And that, Randy is the other one?
Randy.
Randy, yeah, he's our contracts manager.
Okay, um, anything else from you, Chelsea?
I don't believe so, right now, we're just continuing to put out fires as they come, and hopefully we'll try to get a little better organized as we continue to make progress with policies and procedures and projects and you name it, so.
We'll go just about the comments, Mr. Guy, I'll give you the floor, any comments from you, sir?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman, on the financial statements in this agenda on page thirty-six, if I could invite your attention to page thirty-six of the financial statement.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
She talking about the budget?
No, the financial.
The financial.
The June thirtieth.
Thirty-six, wait.
Is that the right page, Mr. Guy?
It's the Enterprise Fund Capital Project Spending Report.
It's not that big.
Mine says, Capital Projects Recap.
Oh, okay, can't go like real page, okay.
That it, Bill?
That's it, if you look down near the bottom of the page, it says that the Commerce Lakes Roundabout has, has not been started, and that the Griffin Roundabout is in process and spent a lot of money. My inclination is that those two are reversed.
Actually, the Griffin Roundabout, they consider the, the Force Main relocation was part of that Roundabout project, but I, yes, you're correct, the Commerce Lakes is done.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you, please.
Commerce Lakes is complete, the Griffin Roundabout, it is technically in progress, because.
Okay, well, it's Commerce Lakes is complete, but it says it's not started, and no money, and no money is been spent.
I'll follow up with Stephen on that there, and these come from Infomark, so I'll follow up with him to get that corrected.
Good catch.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Some have wished it hadn't started, but that's a different story.
That is a different story, Bob, anything from you, sir?
I have nothing.
Ed?
Yeah, I had two items, just following up on the last meeting, I told Chelsea I'd come over and, I was a little disturbed by one resident. Last time, talking about the K ponds, went over and looked, notwithstanding the issue of like, a lot of our ponds needing more soil treatment, the teeth out of the, the stones. That pond looked like it's just supposed to be, there was a little bit of places where they had slippage of sod on the, with Armamax, which, not everywhere. But for all practical purposes, that pond looked great to me, I don't know what they were talking about.
I thought the same thing, I went actually the next day.
I, I don't know what they're, and then I went to the other ponds on both sides, and I, I didn't see any issues there. So I think staff, maybe after the last meeting, went in and did some spraying, and that, that probably helped a lot, because otherwise people are looking at what would be, in their mind, weeds.
Right.
So we got that taken care of, then the other one is, do we have a update on the issue of our sidewalk cutting up in Stony Brook? Did, did we get that worked out?
Yes, we met with the chairman of the Stony Brook Advisory Committee, he is working through, he's got multiple vendors with quotes, but we're going to give the original vendor who made the original cuts, the opportunity to make the repairs, and we are staying in close communication with Mr. Warren on making those improvements, and of course communicating that to the impacted residents.
The other one that I'm hearing, Ed, is just utter absolute not understanding what we're doing on the floor. Of people coming up to me, well, why don't you take ten, take twenty million out of that, why, why, why do we have to go fifty-eight? I said it doesn't make any difference if we take out forty-eight, this doesn't have to do with the approval of a project, it has to do with the process. Do you want us to go out and finance, good example is the streetlights, we know it's all going to cost some big bucks. You want us to go out and debt finance that on five-year financing, so that your rates go even higher? They're not understanding that this is totally to give us bond flexibility.
And I think another thing that we're hearing too, from staff perspective, is that they, they think that we're taking all of that debt out at one time.
Get in line, I've heard that right, left, I said that we would take, as an example, on August the fifth, the next day, we would approve the entire fifty-eight million dollar bond to be released. Then and only then, would you see the ten sixteen figure.
Yep.
And I quit.
Well, we'll do, we'll do the best job we can at communicating.
Yes.
Well, the thing is, we got to keep it in English, don't get into legalese, because we get into legalese.
We have the FAQ.
Yeah, I did see the FAQ.
It's on the website, that has been helping.
We'll push that out again on social media, if you have people that are asking questions, don't hesitate to send them our way through the customer care email. And, you know, we can, we may say it, we may say the same thing in a different way, that it may click with them, but, please.
Will that take my face off the front of Gateway next door?
Yeah.
We can do a video, post on Facebook, watch the video.
We'll give them a better culture. And also, I think Chelsea and Laura have a number of comments and questions, concerns and objections that have come into that, that you may not have seen, and so I think that he would have a shared file for the board to see them make those part of the record proceedings on August fourth.
Georgia's compiling them, so that you don't get forty-seven emails, she's putting everything in one place.
Well, Ed brought up a good point, we post a lot to Facebook and on our website, but the next door, that's also another site that a lot of, a lot of people are on, and if we don't, we don't.
Rebel rousing.
We don't have it.
If we don't have a district, presence on there, we probably should think about it, it's part of our social strategy.
It, it's a place where Chelsea could probably be most effective of coming back and responding to those that are just, and, and this, this is a endless road, you go down this road, it's open to a can of worms. But some of these things are being spread, and they're living on each other, that one person says, well, that might as well just be gospel, because that person said it, and that person didn't have a clue what the hell they're talking about.
Ed, are you missing the blogger? Are you missing the blogger?
Am I missing the blogger?
Remember the blogger guy?
Oh, Jeff.
Oh, oh, Jeff, no, not really. I think a something back coming from the, the district, basically correcting an error or a misconception would help a lot.
I had a very nice conversation with a couple of people on the phone, I've had some good conversations where I cleared up a lot of misconceptions, and they said, oh, that's great, I'm going to go talk to my neighbors and let them know. So I think it's just easier enough to talk with you, but send them to us.
We blasted your blast, we blasted your blast, out to our eight hundred that we have emails for, and that somewhat settled it down. But then when another Gateway next door comes out and just pours gas on an open fire, here we go again.
Just, this is not legal, but this is a leap of advice, but it's just practical, one of my other districts where next door, it's only eight hundred property owners, and, and their next door is going, and all the time, there are rumors, and, and it's just become this big gossip fest, and some of the board members will, I, I tell them not to participate, first of all, I don't think the board members will. I don't know if it will help by going on next door, but just from what I've heard about how people use or don't use it or abuse it, I think Chelsea.
I think our, our policy should be, we put a canned response out, we should not be engaging individuals.
Yes.
That's why we have the FAQ.
Yeah.
Because you know, that's a, that's not a winning scenario, you don't believe me going.
Yeah, if you send, if you send out the questions and the response, and that's it, it's opposed to back and forth.
Again, if you guys are getting asked questions, please relay those to us, so we can make sure that we're answering those appropriately, but also, the same, we might have twenty people asking the same question, and that may warrant, you know, another FAQ going out, or updated FAQ going out.
It's a better course.
Um, Bob, anything from you?
No, I got a list for Chelsea, which I appreciate all the answers, and I think I'm good.
Okay, with that being said, we will adjourn at four forty-seven, nice job, everyone.